Thank you for attending tonight's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. The agenda will be displayed on the screens in the front of the room. You may also follow along by connecting to the district's website, www.wcsoh.org. Click on the District link, then select Board of Education and the Board Doc's Agenda, and then select Tonight's Meeting. There will be two opportunities to address the board this evening. The first will be Agenda Item 6.01. The first set of public comments is related to Agenda Items 9.01 through 11.04. Please state the agenda item that you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 12.01. There is a sign-up sheet located on the table in the back of the room if you would like to speak. And each speaker will have five minutes to address the board, and of course, that will be displayed on the screen as well. And with that, Ms. Marshall, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Mr. Velardo?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Ms. Cotter?
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, moving on to Agenda Item 3.01, nominations for the Office of President. Can I please have a motion and a second to accept nominations?
So moved.
Second.
Do we just do a nomination and a second for the nomination?
Okay.
I mean, that's...
Okay. Can I open it with a motion and then a second, and then throw the person out, and then close it? Sorry, some procedural questions here.
Sorry.
It's okay.
And so, Von, and then do we do a roll call for...
I think we can make nominations now? Yeah. So I'm opening the floor for nominations for the Office of President?
I would like to nominate Mrs. Davidson for President.
I would like to nominate Mrs. Davidson for President. It wasn't on the first time. Not nominating her twice.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, I'll close nominations. Can I ask you to please call the roll?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Okay, I will turn the gavel over. Okay. I'm just...
Oh.
Oh, I need my cushion. Sorry. My gosh, that's low. Sorry about that. Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to 3.04, nominations for the Office of Vice President. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second, and I open the floor.
I would like to nominate Mr. Velardo for Vice President.
Wonderful. Any other nominations? Okay, let's close nominations. And Ms. Marshall, will you please take the roll?
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Abstain.
Aww.
I believe in me, I just am not...
Okay.
Oh, I had the mic on.
Mm-hmm.
Am I moving now?
We good?
Good.
Thank you.
Moving on to 4.01, approve the minutes as read for the December 10, 2018 Regular Board of Education meeting. May I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Ms. Marshall?
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 5.01 is School Board Recognition, and I think we're gonna hand this over to Dr. Kellogg. Okay.
Thank you, President Davidson, members of the board. First of all, congratulations to Mrs. Davidson and Mr. Velardo for your move over in the chairs, taking of the gavel and taking on the role of leadership. I know that I speak on behalf of the whole administrative team when we say we look forward to working with you guys this next year as we move forward with school board business and the business of the community. So this evening, it's a pleasure for us to take a moment to do something that I know you'd prefer us not to spend a lot of time shining on, because I know who you are, but it is appropriate for us to take time to recognize that this is School Board Recognition Month in January. And the purpose of School Board Recognition Month is to build awareness and understanding of the vital function an elected Board of Education plays in our society. School Board Recognition Month honors the members of Ohio's more than 700 city exempted village, local, and joint vocational boards of education, and educational service centers, governing boards for their commitment to providing quality public education to Ohio schoolchildren. Our board, the Westerville City School District, is joining with other districts throughout the state to recognize the important contribution school board members make to their communities. Ohioans, Ohioans benefit every day from the dedicated energies and countless, countless hours devoted by a group of more than 3,400 men and women across the state. These public servants are elected to serve by local citizens and receive little compensation for their tireless efforts. These men and women are the local school board members of Ohio. These people unselfishly contribute their time and talents toward the advancement of public education. They represent a continuing commitment to local citizen control and decision-making in education. Even though we're making a special effort during January to show appreciation to our school board members, we recognize their contributions reflect the year-round commitment on their part. They are dedicated individuals who are committed to the continuing success of our schools and our students. In a minute, we have some free prizes to give away for you. But I thought it'd be worth taking a moment just to remind our folks in the community what happens. I think it's easy to turn on the TV, for those who do, or read the board briefs and think that the commitment level is twice a month, an hour and a half at these meetings. And behind the scenes, as we all know, and those who have served as school board members, there is a lot of hours. There's a lot of conversation. And I know for me and my role in getting to know each of you as individuals, I know Mr. Bell recently joined, but our relationship since I've been here is such that I have a good sense of who he is, I have a strong sense of who he is, and each of you and your commitment to the children of the school district and the children of our community and making the school district a value-added proposition for our entire community, and I know that's dear, near and dear to you. And some of the accomplishments recently in our past that we've had that are worth reminding ourselves of as we get ready for this blank sheet of paper that's 2019, let's keep in mind where we are with the Westerville South High School renovation project, the facilities' master planning process overall, the technology your efforts have supported and putting in place in our schools in the last several years, the middle school redesign, the focus on our middle school programming so that we can enhance that experience for those children, the increase of all-day kindergarten in our school district, the bringing back magnets from the past when we were in the sunsetting component, reducing fees for families and increasing transportation opportunities for children. Those are some of the big ones that just come to mind off the top of my head over the last several years, that the members of our current board and previous members of board have done to bring value to the community, at the same time maintaining a real strong eye on the financial status of the district and making sure that our community is getting the most out of their investment. So I personally want to thank each of you and appreciate what you're doing. At this time, I'd like to ask Ms. Marshall if she would take the front and take over our certificate handout. So I'm gonna ask each board member to come forward, and then our mayor is here with a proclamation as well. So as I call your name, if you could come forward, and Nicole will hand you your certificate. Dr. Nancy Nestor Baker couldn't be with us this evening, a personal matter, and we wish her well. So I'd first like to recognize our newest member of the board, Reverend Von Bell. Past president from 2018, Jerry Cotter.
returning to the gavel for a second term as President Tracy Davidson.
And our current Vice President, Reverend Rick Velardo. And if you'll stand there for a few more minutes of embarrassment, I'm gonna ask our mayor, Craig Treniff, to come up and offer a resolution from the city. Mayor?
Well, good evening. President Davidson, Vice President Velardo, and members of the board, it's my pleasure to be here this evening to bring a proclamation for School Board Week. I think it's high time that the members of the Westerville School Board were recognized for your service to us and the community and to give you some sense of our appreciation. As a city council member, I can appreciate the job of school board member, and I honestly think it's a much more difficult position. You get into complex issues, you have to know a great deal of information, you get into tax issues. It's a tough job, and you're really to be commended upon your service, and I say that not just as mayor, but also as a resident of the district. You've maintained a truly outstanding district that we are very proud of, and you're to be commended for all that work. So the least I can do is a small proclamation, which I'll read to you. Whereas it is one of the responsibilities of the mayor of the city of Westerville to recognize occasions of outstanding significance, and whereas it is the mission of the Westerville City School District to provide all students with the best possible education, and whereas the school board sets the direction for our community's public schools by envisioning the community's educational future, and whereas the school board sets policies and procedures to govern all aspects of school operation, and whereas the school board keeps attention focused on progress towards the school district's goals and maintains two-way communications with all segments of the community, and whereas serving on a school board requires an unselfish devotion of time and service to carry on the mission and business of the school district, and whereas the school board must respond on behalf of the community to the educational needs of the students, and final whereas, whereas the school board voluntarily accepts these above responsibilities, now therefore I, Craig Treniff, Mayor of the city of Westerville, do hereby proclaim January of 2019 as School Board Recognition Month in Westerville and encourage all of our citizens to publicly and privately thank our school board members in our district for your dedicated service to our children. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. Thank you. Craig? Craig, would you take a picture? Come on up here with us. John, Nicole? Is this you? All right? Moving forward, we kind of love it on social media, right? Let's get check to prove. Okay, fix. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten.
All righty. 8.01, a resolution to approve requests from the treasurer. May I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Second? Sorry. You got it?
Yeah, one of us.
Well, I was looking for a second, I'm sorry.
Oh.
I jumped the gun. Apologize.
Second.
We good?
Yes.
Yes.
So there are several items on here that are just part of an annual thing that we do at every organizational meeting that will allow us to renew the operations with finances. Any questions about any of them?
No.
You can call the roll?
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 8.02, resolution to participate in state and federal funded programs for fiscal year 2019. May I have a motion? So moved.
Your turn. Second.
Ms. Marshall?
These, just like you said, it's just a resolution that will allow us to participate. We have some entitlement grants that we get from the state of Ohio that's funneled through from the federal government, and this pretty much lists every program that we have, but we have some that may come up during the year too, so.
Okay. 8.03, resolution to approve... Oh, I'm so sorry. Yep.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Just moving right along, sorry. 8.03, resolution to approve Board of Education participation, this is with OSBA, right? Or the Legal Assistance Fund?
Three things.
It's three things.
Right? Yep. Chamber of Commerce, OSBA Legal Assistance Fund, and just OSBA membership. Anything else? Questions? I'd like to make a motion to approve it. Okay.
Second.
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 8.04, resolution to appoint a delegate and an alternate delegate to the 2019 Annual Ohio School Boards Association Business Meeting. May I have a motion?
So moved. We can make a nomination?
Yep.
It's good. Yeah, right. Yeah.
So you're gonna nominate Mr. Bell?
Well, I was asking his permission first, but yes. Yes, I'd like to nominate Mr. Bell for the austere position of delegate to the 2019 Annual Ohio School Board Business Meeting.
Do you want me to nominate an alternate as well? Or... I'd like to nominate Dr. Nestor Baker as the alternate.
Have you asked her?
No, but, no, okay. Okay. Who? Is anyone interested?
I'll take it. I'll take the alternate.
I'll nominate Vice President Velardo as the alternate. So before we vote on this, let's explain what's gonna happen here. Will you explain that to Mr. Bell? What exactly it is?
So the Ohio School Boards Association has an annual conference in November, and they have a delegate luncheon. You attend the conference, attend the functions of the OSBA's capital conference. It's a good time. There's a luncheon that you'll want to attend also.
That's fine. I wouldn't have nominated him if it wasn't a good thing.
Well, sorry, I'm rusty. I guess we gotta slow down here and talk about this stuff before, so I apologize. So we have a motion, we have a second, and we have our two delegates.
Is everybody in?
Yep.
All right. Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. 8.05, a resolution to approve the purchases in ordinance with ORC 5705.41 and Board Policy 6320. So moved. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. May I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Ms. Marshall, do you want to talk to us about these at all? I know you...
I do.
Okay.
So there are three purchase orders that are then an out-purchase orders, and so what that means is that at the time the purchase was made, we didn't have a purchase order in place. We did have the budget available for these purchases, so I'm asking for the board's approval to pay the invoices that we've received. One is for Project Voice. I spoke with Miss Yanni, that was out of Walnut Springs Middle School, and there was some confusion that invoice was to be paid for out of a grant. There was some confusion about how that would work, which is why we didn't have the purchase order in place at that time. We had a... Huberidge Elementary School had a concrete pad poured with Jeff Bead Concrete Construction, which is another one of the invoices. That was done through a fundraiser, and again, there was some confusion about the timing and when that would happen. So they did have the money for that project. And then come and sales and service was for bus parts, that there was some confusion about when the Transportation Department called to order the supplies. They dated it that day rather than when we actually picked them up, so there was a little bit of confusion, and these were just off by a couple of days.
Any questions?
Not a question, just I... It's just helpful, I think, for people to know when we say there was confusion about paying, you know, that kind of thing. You've addressed all three of these, you've approached the folks...
Yes.
You've cleared up the confusion for future issues.
Yes. So we've addressed all of these, and we are trying very hard to limit the amount of the out-purchase orders that we have. There are gonna be instances, I mean, it's difficult to, you know, never have these come through, but we are working with our administrative team, and we've put together some documents that I think will be helpful in the future, and, you know, I'm meeting with the departments as I need to, to kind of help sort some of those out, so.
Okay, thanks.
But what's important here is that these projects were budgeted for, the money was available, it was just a matter of the timing with the purchase orders being in place.
Okay. You want to call the roll?
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Moving on to the Personnel Consent Agenda. Is everyone okay if I bundle them and then... Okay, so we are going to... I'm gonna ask for a motion from 9.01 through 9.10.
To what?
I'm sorry.
To bundle them?
Yes, I thought I already asked you.
No, I wanted to make sure, that's what you want to do?
Yep.
So moved.
Second. Then Dr. Hopkins is gonna talk to us about the Personnel Consent Agenda.
Good evening, everyone. President Davidson, members of the board, Dr. Kellogg, I would like to present for your consideration the Personnel Consent Agenda. Some of the highlights from the consent agenda are as follows. We have 20 resignations from various classified and classified support substitute positions, excuse me. One resignation from a school administrator. Principal Sherry Bercham from Point View Elementary has announced her resignation. We have two teacher retirements, both of which we look forward to recognizing at an end-of-the-school-year celebration. A couple of one-time payments, one for the orientation members, a second one to individuals who are gonna be providing support for technology integration, and a third for some of our teachers who will be supporting our Kindergarten 101, a parent information meetings that will be coming up. In addition, we have the employment of six individuals in various classified and classified subpositions, and also the employment of one new teacher, and the employment and update of individuals who are serving in a number of supplemental contract and classified people activity programs. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
No, thank you. I think we're good.
I wanna... Oh, it's not a question. I just wanna... We will be recognizing the teachers later on and so on, and so what I'm about to say now, that's important. But I wanted to thank Sherry Bercham for the work that she's done. If I could pull this one out, you can let her know I would vote no. But she has done good work, and we want to honor her future ambitions and desire, and I know we're gonna get a great person in Point View, and I don't, I'm not worried about that at all. I just wanted to thank Sherry for what she has done for the time that she's been here, particularly at Point View. So that's all. Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay. Ms. Marshall?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Old business is next. Is everyone okay, since this is a final reading, if we do it as one?
I am okay.
Yes.
Okay. So 10.01 through 10.12, may I have a motion for these final policy readings? So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments before we vote? Okay.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. Which takes us to new business, 11.01, first reading per Bylaw 164, and this is about notice of meetings. Does anyone want to talk to us about that?
Me.
All right.
I have all of these, I believe.
Okay, we can just go down the list.
So notice of meetings, this update, most of these updates are from recommendations for clarification of language from NEOLA, but notice of meetings cleans up language to make it more clear and also corrects language for the board members to be notified no later than two days in advance of the meeting, so that's what's a requirement with the Ohio revised code. And then Ohio law requires that the general public and media who's requested notice be notified 24 hours in advance, but board members should be notified at least two days in advance. And so this kind of makes it clear, and it also clarifies because the law requires you receive notice in writing, so that's being added to the policy as well.
Okay.
Talk about the next one.
Sure.
Okay. Regular meetings, this adds language for the board to set the times and dates of regular meetings at the organizational meeting. That's actually a specific requirement, the revised code. And it's changing the language for the association. I think it was specific to the Ohio High School Athletic Association, and now it's just like a generic associations language.
Okay.
Special meeting, this update adds language for emergency meetings and clarifies some language for special meetings.
11.04, is this your two, Bylaw 165.3?
Recession and adjournment.
It's about recess.
I know.
Not that kind, though.
Not the fun kind, though. Well, I guess fun kind, maybe.
I was excited for a second there.
So NEOLA said this is to align recess and adjournment with Ohio Public Records laws. It's an attempt to clarify language and practices that have been questioned by clients in the recent past, so it's about like when, if you recess for the next day, it's basically a new meeting, and you can't recess for like days at a time, basically. Executive session, the next one is, it updates the language for the property disposal executive session topic, so that that's more clear, and the audit conferences are exempt from the... And the audit conferences are exempt from the public meeting requirements, and so this adds that language to that. Minutes, this is for, it's adding the language for the minutes to be promptly prepared and filed. That's a requirement of the Ohio revised code. And 11.07, public participation at meetings, this updates removing the requirement of approval by the superintendent or president and language-keeping statements from being personally directed and antagonistic. It also adds language that the board does not discriminate based on the identity of the speaker, their viewpoint, or the content of their speech. NEOLA says that this update is to reflect current case law about public participation. And the last one is the use of credit cards. There was House Bill 312 that was passed and made into law, is into effect February the 2nd. So this is adding all kinds of changes to our policy because of that new law. And there's some very specific requirements that are being added to the policy that we would normally see in an administrative guideline, but the law specifically requires that we have those procedural things in there. And we have created this policy, updated our policy, I should say, using language from the Ohio Association of School Business Officials, which is an association that I'm a member of, and also through NEOLA's suggestions.
Okay.
That was a lot, I know. Are there any questions?
Okay. 12.1, to appoint a board designee as the public records official, which is Ms. Marshall. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Would you take the roll, please?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
12.2, resolution to establish the 2019 Board of Education meeting calendar. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Any questions or comments here? I guess I have one. I want to thank Jill Beck, because every year we forget about superintendent evaluations and treasurer evaluations. So thank you for putting it on there so we can hold each other accountable. That's always nice. You can take the roll.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
12.3, resolution to appoint legal counsel for the Board of Education, which is...
Congress laughing because we need legal counsel.
Oh, okay. May I have a motion? So moved.
Second.
Okay. And our legal counsel that we use is Bricker and Eckler and Rich and Gillis Law Group. Any questions, comments there? Would you take the roll, please?
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
12.4, overnight and out-of-state field trips. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Okay. It looks like North is going to a wrestling tournament and South is going to music performance.
Chicago.
Yeah. Nice. Okay. Ms. Marshall, would you take the roll?
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
13.1 is public comments, and we do not have any tonight. 14.1 is board comments. Who would like to go first?
Just real quickly thanking my fellow board members for honoring me with the term as vice president. We work very collegially, and I'm actually very grateful for that because I know of other boards and districts that do not, so I'm grateful for that. Just on behalf of Dr. Nancy Nestor Baker, she couldn't be here tonight, a personal family member's health, so we certainly will be thinking of her and are grateful for her support as well. Just looking forward to another great year. I'm grateful for Mrs. Cotter's leadership this last year. I thought she did a great job, and we're just really honored that you were able to do that. Welcome, Vaughn. And you'll love that meeting that you're going to. That's it.
Mr. Bell?
I would just, once again, thank you all for the honor and privilege of being able to serve along with you in this capacity. I'd also like to remind the community, coming up on next Monday, the 21st, will be the Leadership Westerville MLK Legacy Project will be hosting the 14th Annual Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Breakfast Celebration that will take place at Villa Milano. The doors will open at 7:30 a.m. The program will begin at 8 o'clock a.m., and we're looking, it'll be a great morning of celebration. We will have several students from our district will be recognized for their contributions, and also one of our staff members will be recognized for her service. So looking forward to that.
Great, thank you. Jerry?
Sure. I'd like to thank, of course, the board's support for this past year when I served as president. I really appreciate that. Of course, the leadership team here in the district's administration. I really enjoyed that role and looking forward to, truthfully, a little bit of a break this upcoming year. But yes, I wanted to thank everybody for their support and appreciation, so thank you.
Thank you. Okay. 5.1, per approval of 12.2 above, the regular board meeting will be held Monday, January 28, 2019, at 6 p.m. here at the Early Learning Center, 936 East Wind Drive. And then I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Ms. Cotter?
Yes.
Mr. Velardo?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
And with that, we're done.